Play, please.
I play the nation's flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, individual and liberty, justice, and all.
Question. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 7th meeting. Think our biggest crowd of the last three years. Thank you all for coming. Minutes for July 17th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the 17th meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial, the ski repo was out today, but the financial report, the payment of bills. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Lou, I hate to ask a question, but I'm like 99% sure maybe we can get the answer. There is a payment to the Cecil County government for forty-seven, almost forty-eight thousand dollars. I'm assuming that's the tipping fees?
Probably.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a budget amendment 2020-01. Lou, you want to handle that?
Yes, that amendment to the fiscal 20 budget. We should authorize the $2,099 from CE's funds and we'll credit that to ECD repairs and maintenance to put in a new window and to tent all the windows in the, what do you call that room?
The record.
Fishbowl records, I'm sorry. I always call it fishbowl rather than say that. And this is actually the money that the police confiscated and was seized during criminal activities or investigations and forfeited to the court process.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2020-01?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that at all? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a planning department 2018 annual report. Ms. Jean Miller, come along down.
Everyone should have a copy of the 2018 annual report.
And I'd like to comment that you have two members of the planning board here tonight. Thank you, Keith and Ed.
So this is a summary of activities. We're required to submit an annual report to the state on our planning, planning development activities. And this document will describe any type of land use, transportation, community facilities, zoning map amendments, subdivision plans for exonerations, that sort of thing that occurred in the fiscal year, I'm sorry, in the calendar year 2018. And it lists, identifies the members of the planning commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Historic District Commission, the Planning Department. It describes residential building permits for new dwellings, permits issued in the critical area, special exceptions, variances, appeals, rezonings, and subdivision applications. Also, the Historic District Commission actions and amendments to the zoning ordinance or to the zoning maps and applications. Does anyone have any questions?
When will we actually see the report?
You should have.
We had that report.
Yes.
From 2018.
Yes, the annual, it's an annual report, so it's a calendar year, 2018. And the planning commission has already reviewed it and recommended approval of the document.
Very good. Any comments from the board? No. Thank you, Jean.
Yep.
Lou, you are on.
Okay, the first item I have, ordinance 4019. This was ordinance, you know, men's, the Elton zoning ordinance, I think was introduced at meeting of 17th and is subject to adoption by the board this evening. The amendments include Article 10, permissible uses, Section 7, permissible use statement. Indicate here on the 3.130, primary offices of physicians with up to three professional scene patients, including nurse practitioners and physician assistants, permitted by special exception in the C1, C2, C3 BI zoning district, words are added, and by special exception with conditions in the TC down center zone. Second section here, 3.130, primary offices of physicians with four or more professional scene patients, including nurse practitioners and physician assistants, permitted by special exception in the C2, C3 BI zoning district, words added, and by special exception with conditions in the TC zone down center zone district. Article 12, supplemental use regulations, Section 33, added medical use in the TC zone. Any existing primary office of physicians in the TC zone with three or four more or four more professionals seeing patients, including nurse practitioners and physician assistants, may relocate one time within the TC zone to a space within a building below or above the street level with the condition of the practices within the same specialty and the number of professionals remains within the same classification. I believe these amendments are reviewed and approved by the Health and Planning Commission and would recommend for adopters amendments to the Elton zoning ordinance this evening.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 4-2019, medical office in town center zone?
So moved.
We have a motion. Any discussion? The only comment I'd like to make, it is for adoption. We introduced it the last meeting. John, you reviewed?
Yeah.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Motion carries.
Next item I have is just a comment. I have no action for it, but forward contract priority construction project. The town square project to accommodate ADA, American Disabilities Act amendment, I mean modification to that courtyard out there, the contract was sent to priority construction in Baltimore, but we have not received the contract back from them. They require performance payment and maintenance costs and insurance certificates of that nature, including the execution of the contract with specification for that project. As soon as it comes back, I'll bring it back before the board for approval, but at this point in time, this is a comment, comment for me about that project.
Any questions about the town square project from the board? Is there any speculation? When do you think that we?
We have ten days from the date of the send, so it should be back very shortly.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, the next item I have, resolution 10. Resolution 10-2019, vehicle equipment financing loan. A resolution of mayor commissions of Town Elton authorizing a loan from Columbia Bank to finance the Town Elton's previous purchase of vehicles and equipment in fiscal 2018. Whereas the board, according to the charter of the Town Elton Articles 8, CA 3B, is empowered to borrow money for purposes deemed appropriate by the board. Whereas the board shall authorize the borrowing of $616,000 from the bank, prepayment of which shall be based on the amortization period of sixty months at a rate of 2.99%. Said rate being fixed for life alone, and the bank should not assess a penalty for prepayment of the loan principal, along with other terms included in Columbia Bank term sheet made a part of and attached to this resolution. Whereas the board has determined that a loan to finance the previous purchase of vehicles and equipment during fiscal 2019, that the debt payments for this loan be paid over the service life of those vehicles and equipment is divested to the Town Elton. The listing of the vehicles and equipment is attached to this resolution. And therefore, the board hereby resolves the following one, that the Town Elton shall borrow the amount of $616,000 from the Columbia Bank to finance the previous purchase of vehicles and equipment, according to the Columbia Bank term sheet executed by Mayor Robert Dale on July 22nd, 2019, too. That the board authorizes the mayor to execute all appropriate and necessary documents and instruments with regard to the force said loan. That the monthly payments shall be debt and debt and perdehated from the Town General Fund of Columbia Bank, and this resolution about shall be effective on the date of doc, or recommend the board of doc this resolution.
We have a motion to approve resolution R10-2019, Columbia Bank will loan in the amount of $616,000.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? The only comment I'd make, this is actually our first loan in five years. We've been using the, the general fund. We've used the surplus funds that have been in the town budget to pay for all equipment over the last five years. I thought it was a good opportunity to go ahead and finance these vehicles and let's see how this budget plays out. There's still an opportunity. We may just pay this one off. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last item I have is the waiver about public coverage restriction. It'll be applied to the date of October 12th, 2019, for everything in this, in this building. And I think it's sponsored by Commissioner Massey and Yano for this special event, and I would recommend the board grant such a waiver.
We have a motion to approve the waiver for alcohol on October 12th, 2019.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that completes my question.
Very good. That's quite a few on here. We had talked briefly at the last meeting about coming on board and joining the Cecil County Chamber of Commerce. The Town of Elton is, is the only municipality that's not a member of the county chamber. I think after a little bit of discussion and thought, I'd like to ask the board to move forward and give us, give the green light to move forward to join that membership. Does, does anyone have any good, bad feelings? Yes, yes, no, or green light?
Green light.
Fun. Very good. Okay, we don't need a motion on that. We'll just go ahead and move forward and join that membership. We have the reappointments to the Historic District Commission. I'd like to recommend to the board to reappoint Paula Newton to the term of September 1st, 2019, to August 31st, 2022. We have a motion to support Paula in this position.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on Paula? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Nancy Yurkis to the same board, Historic District Commission, for the term, same term, September 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Second. We got a motion in a second. Any discussion on Nancy Yurkis? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two openings. I'm glad we got a great crowd tonight because we do have two openings on the Historic District Commission. And I'd like to ask the board to consider, please, like you know who, if you have anyone in mind that would like to be on that board. And as always, we need to have residents of the town participate in these boards, and it's very important for you to get involved. So if anyone has any interest to be involved in the Historic District Commission, please reach out to the Town of Elton, and we'd love to strongly consider you. But we have two openings. Brian Morgan, who served on the board for several years, has decided not to serve, and, and the same with Will White. So we do have two openings. Okay, the next up, I had a request from the Elton Junior Football League. They're requesting every year, I think we give them a $500 donation. Just wanted to run this by the board. Is there any issues if we move forward? We did budget for these amounts collectively. Any issues if we move forward with the Elton Football League, Junior Football League to make that donation? It seems to be good with that one. Good. The next one, the Elton VFW is requesting a donation from the town. They always give back through their lottery money, but we have to give money for their operating. They can't use it for their actual operating of their facility. So I'd like to also state that we'd like to give them a $500 donation also back to them. The board is good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And lastly, the Elton High School Football Touchdown Club, as always, a request for a donation. In the last few years, we've given them a donation of $500. Is the board okay with that one also?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. That's all my requests. I'm going to let the, I'm going to open up for the board to talk, and then I'm going to come back and I'm going to address the Southfields project after the board, so I can give everyone what we understand. But I don't want to get off track. I'll come back after everyone has had an opportunity to speak about their business. Rob, what do you have? Anything on the?
Your permission to report?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, you know, I have one thing. I, I found in my packet a note from JP Henry. The gentleman had the photo exhibit at the Arts Council. It was autistic gentleman, adult, that had the show at the Arts Council. There was a note in here from him thanking the mayor and commissioners for a certificate that we presented to him. And a note from his mother, and it says, "A special thank you to the Town Elton for the wonderful acknowledgement of JP's achievements. As a special needs patient, a parent, it is not often that we can celebrate our children's accomplishments, and when we do, it is usually privately. Thank you for this wonderful public gift to JP. It is currently being framed." And that was still, that was us presenting that to JP.
Very nice. Thank you. Anything else, Rob? No.
I already have an update on, apart from record, for this time, but I just wanted to give a special thank you to the police department. I missed the, the, the group that they had here on Sunday, was it? For the cadets.
Oh, junior police guy.
Police, I want to commend him for the job that he done for that. And also last night, if you didn't get a chance, come out for the night out of the crime. He had a wonderful turnout, and just want to thank you, the police department, and the people there.
Thanks. That did a great job.
Charles?
Right church near the Board of Education would like to have the Bethel Street block door, Dan and others, they're having their annual picnic, and they're going to have movie battles, a lot of other activities this year, which is a first for them. They're bringing in a trailer that will have seven strings on there, and sixteen kids can play inside that trailer. That's something new that even myself wouldn't see, so I'd like to offer that. And see if that could be requested to have that.
Fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, August 24th. And all you need is just the two barricades, and there are two residents on that street, and of course, the church personnel will contact them, let them know this is happening. That's it. Oh, and thank you for the night out. It was a great turnout. Anytime you can bring children out, involve them in any activity, it's always good, and certainly last night was a good night for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted to congratulate ECD on the work that they did, and all the sponsors that you had come in to participate. It was really phenomenal, and everybody there was, seemed very happy with everything.
Yeah, our folks put a lot of effort into it.
They sure did. They did.
Turned out, turned out real good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I don't, if, if every, I'm just curious if everybody's had a chance to physically see the gate at Elk Landing that that now is done, rather than those ones that were ready. I'm, I'm just speechless. I really don't, not only did he design it, but you know, he constructed it, and we are so blessed to have such a talented person, you know, that's working for us. I mean, I've seen other stuff that he's done throughout the town, but this has really been a remarkable project. So if you haven't seen it yet, I would encourage everybody here to take a look down and take a look at it. I do have one question, though. There was a little blurb in about adding color. Was that, what was that about?
The, the gate's invisible.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, at night.
Because it's, well, it's, even in the day, when it's dark background, and it's a satin black finish, so when you come down landing lane, you don't see it. So they're thinking about using a plate of clear lacquer that may increase its reflectivity to a certain extent, but not really change the character of the gate. That's one option, and then the other option would be to do some more colorful additions to it.
Yeah, I mean, I personally hope that the color idea goes away. You don't want to mess the true art.
We haven't been rushing.
But I mean, you know, I am very supportive of any measures you can take to keep somebody from running into it.
Yeah, I thought about putting sign on invisible gate, slow down.
Something, even, even like a huge, I don't know, whatever you come up with, just to keep it protected.
We have orange barrels right now, too. Have to really intentionally run.
I mean, maybe, you know, somebody can come up with a really good, permanent idea. That would be appreciated to protect it. But please extend our, our thanks to, and yes, that's all I have.
Hey, we can shine a light on it.
Well, we put a, like Delmar, but put a light on the pole there, because there's a pole where we have a meter and everything. And it's an LED light, a nice one that they had. It lights the area out, but it's still flat back. The glass is, like I said, it's a matte finish, and it probably doesn't show up. We put a couple reflectors on the bottom, so you can see them, but I don't want to screw it up too much because it looks so beautiful, you know?
It does. It looks great. I would, I would say to everyone, if you get an opportunity to go out to the Elk Landing, and he did a wonderful job of recreating a gate that, that shows some of the history behind the project. It's beautiful, absolutely beautiful. But actually, I wanted to move forward. You done, Jean? Very good. We had a, on Wednesday, July 31st, we had a, I'm going to say a press release here at the Town of Elton, and I thought Katie from the Cecil Wig did a wonderful job of covering the story. And I'm going to give you everything that I know at this point about the project, and I'll give you everything I know of where the project has to go. And in that room that day, of course, we had, I know Rob, you were there, Earl was there, Charles, you came, we had a few members, I know Ed, and Katie, of course, and Jean, and we had a packed house for the event. And I think if I miss, if I misspeak, I'm sure that one of these two here will keep a close eye on me and tell me I said something incorrectly. But a little bit about the site. The site is 650 acres. It, the site, the land goes from, I'm going to say Maloney Road, almost Maloney Road, and goes to Holdeth, the Frenchtown Road, crosses over Route 213, goes through the Crowgy Farm, and it goes all the way down to the Frenchtown, at the end of Frenchtown Road to the, where the old five-star Hollinsworth, Hollinsworth, Frenchtown Tavern was, as they called it, as Mike Dixon called it. So the property is 650 acres. It's been in the town, I believe, since 2003 or 2004. It was annexed in at that point. It was, it is currently zoned high-density residential, which means that, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, that is it eight acres, or eight houses per acre, or is it 16 houses, depending on?
Maximum density for apartments is 14 dwelling units per acre.
14, 14 per acre, and as you can see, we've got 650 acres of, of land there. The, this project would have probably, in its old state, would have probably moved forward if we didn't have the housing crunch that we had in 2009, 2010. I think at that point, it was under contract. I've been told it was under contract for many millions of dollars. Fortunate maybe to all of us here, that, not so fortunate to the, the owners of the land, but fortunate maybe to all of us that there was a housing decline. Nothing has happened. In 2017, going into 18, the federal government, I'm going to say it's a federal government, it may not be 100%, they had to go through the state of Maryland, but the area has been designated opportunity zone. What does opportunity zone mean? There's pretty much a large portion of Old Town of Elton is considered opportunity zone, which means that investors can take their winnings, or capital gains. And they can take their capital gains and invest in opportunity zones. And there's many throughout the state of Maryland, but they take areas where there hasn't been a lot of activity over the last X amount of years. So these opportunity zones are places where the government, I'm going to say the federal government, wanted people to invest their money and try to revive areas to bring life into the area. So the, the, I'm going to say the bottom line of it is, without, I'll give you the Reader's Digest version of this, is that in an opportunity zone, if you keep your investment in there, you're winning, your capital gains in there for 10 years. The investor is basically tax-free at the end of 10 years. Their capital gains are nothing. And every one of us can invest in that because banks like PNC look for people that have capital gains, and they put it into these accounts. So it's not necessarily the folks that are involved in the project, but they're borrowing money from the opportunity zone funds. So saying that, Elton is, we're under a lot of action right now. I can tell you, there's a lot of interest. It went from zero interest in the Town of Elton over the last five years to a tremendous amount in, in action. In Jean's office, if you get an opportunity to come in, you'll actually see all these arrows of new prospective building, construction, opportunity for new development in the Town of Elton. I want to stress to everyone that these are areas that are in the Town of Elton. We're not having to annex areas into the Town of Elton to make that happen. Now, saying that, there is a couple people wanting to annex in now, but unrelated to the site. So I'm getting off the path a little bit, but the 650 acres, high density is where it's at. So about four years ago, I had a vision, and this vision was to bring to Elton the largest indoor/outdoor recreation facility in North America. I want it to be a world-class venue. The sports tourism market for amateur sports is up to a $14 billion a year business. So my thinking was, instead of having, what was coming in was 2,500 houses. My thought four years ago was, I don't want any house. I don't want this type of volume of houses here in our community. Especially, good, bad, or indifferent, we have found that during that market crash, we had a lot of people that lost their jobs, which was who worked at Chrysler, General Motors, MBNA. So our market here in the Town of Elton went from 70% homeownership down to 30% homeownership. Most of the homes in Elton are actually rental properties today. So we have to, as a group, figure out strategically how we can create more homeownership in our town without having more rental issues. Once again, I'm not against rentals. I'm good with rentals, but I'm just given the whole thinking behind where I was going at this. So for the last four years, I met with, right here in this room, traveling, I've met with, I can tell you, I've met with David Cordish, the owner of Maryland Live Casino, owner of many projects throughout the state of Maryland, Philadelphia Live Casino. I met with, I met with him. I've met with Under Armour, Sagamore Development, Weller Development, Governor Hoibis Development Group. I can, I can. I can, I can tell you that I have met with individuals about this workplace. We had two individuals that came back to us and said, Mayor, we'll do the job for you, but we want you to pay us to do the work for you. And that really wasn't going to work. So three months ago, I have, I truly gave up on this concept of trying to create this tourism for the Town of Elton. So I went to, I had a phone call from Chris Warrior, the county's economic development director, and he asked me to take a trip to Baltimore with him. And we just had a meeting here with another entity, and we went to Baltimore, and we met with an economic development director from Howard County, I think he's from Howard County. And we sat down, and I was introduced to the individual named Ray Jackson, St. Louis. So during our discussion, he said, well, Mayor, you know, you're, I said, I'm going to give it one more pitch for this world-class facility. And he kind of looked at me, he said, well, the problem that you have is there's just no funding for these things. It's a great idea, it may really work, it'll, but if you could get it going, there could be some positive points to it, but you've got to have housing around it, you've got to have industrial around it, you've got to have commercial around it to feed the recreation, or it just won't work. So I said, well, do you have interest in this site? And he said, no, not really, I just wanted to meet you. And he said, but I'll take a close look at this for you. He said, who's your engineer? And I said, well, KCI is our town engineer. And at that point, he said, well, you know, I do business with KCI. He said, I also do business with Morrison Ritchie Associates, another engineering firm. And I said, well, you could probably get all the information you want from Morrison Ritchie, because back in 2007, 2008, I know that they were the ones that kind of did some work for these 2,500 townhomes that they wanted to put on the site next to Kensington Courts. So he got back to me about two or three days later, and he said, would you introduce me to the owners of the property? I said, sure. So I introduced them to the owners of the property, two of the three owners of the property I introduced them to. And from that point on, they have negotiated a, an agreement, they have moved forth with, they're moving forth with their due diligence. And in this due diligence, as Katie had reported, they're wanting to take the whole 650, instead of taking it one section at a time, they want us to take a look at the whole 650 acres collectively, and that way, from our standpoint, we can control it a little bit better by having the 650, for example. I always like to say now, we all know some of the positive things, and we also know some of the negative things in each of our developments. You know, I live on Hermannus Drive, and we don't have, we don't have curving and guttering. Very similar to, I know what's happening over in Kensington Courts. I don't have curving and guttering. I wish that I had curving and guttering on my driveway, or in our neighborhood. Our lighting's terrible. I, quite frankly, I can't, I don't really like Comcast cable. There's a lot of things that I don't like. So we, as a team, and I say this, we as a team, we have an opportunity to build the South Side of Elton into something that we all could be proud of. And I could see us putting in 5G networks. I can see maybe heated streets so that we don't have to plow the streets. I could see solar panel lights to where it limits, you know, more, a more green community. So there's things that we can do moving forward that we all have control over if we do it as a whole, rather than as a section, which was proposed before. So during the press conference, Mr. Jackson, and he made it very clear that he wants to be very transparent about this, and that we do have a cell phone number, so as we go through this process, he said, please let anyone have my cell phone number that wants to talk to me about this project, and he'll be more than happy to do that. And we'll give that to you if anyone wants to meet up with Michelle here. But the project itself, so starting back around the, behind, I'm going to say Happy 40. Does everyone know where Happy 40 is on Route 40? Starting behind the Happy 40 area, the proposed area is about 250 acres of industrial. Now, to me, industrial, the, it's not, I'm going to say, not our father's industrial. Industrial today is, is clean. It's logistics, more logistics oriented when it comes to industrial. So they want to do about 250 acres of industrial. Then it's adjoined by, I think we own, the Town of Elton owns about 150 acres, which will absolutely remain a green space. And then to each side of that, there's about another, I think 40 on this side, and maybe another 40 on the other side, which will actually remain green also. Then it leads into the corner or the intersection of Frenchtown Road and Route 213, which there's a 39-acre parcel there, which they want to start the single-family homes. The, they're proposing to start the single-family homes there. And then the corner, right across from 213, is an area where they want to put a commercial section. This commercial section would probably house the hotel, the movie theater, the steakhouse, the Panera Bread, the, all the amenities with the commercial side. He's even mentioned the Dave and Buster's, which would, which would partner into the next section, which is about the 60 to 70 acres of recreation. Now, the 60 to 70 acres of recreation would be 12 to 14 full-size fields. I'm going to say football fields, soccer fields, lacrosse fields. Then it goes past, to the, right shortly behind that, again, is more additional single-family homes. And then in the rear, going down toward the water, he has proposed an over, an active over 50 community, which would be partnered up with maybe a joint venture of a clubhouse down onto the water. The one thing that he continued to stress to me was that all the amenities would be shared and welcomed by the adjoining areas. I saw, for example, he wants to put in a community swimming pool that the neighborhoods could use. He wants to put in a community clubhouse, which the community, the area could use. So that's what he showed on the presentation that we had here. He has a developer in Trammell Crow, who would be his industrial commercial builder. He has stated that they're projecting there's well over 1,000 jobs that would be created here with that commercial and industrial. And the concept that he really wants to give to the community is the live-work-play scenario, truly a mixed-use concept of the whole area. The, I'm making sure I don't forget anything as I'm going through my mind here. He is very conscious that none of this could be approved without many studies. We know that the traffic on 213 is terrible. It's worse on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays when the Pennsylvania Navy comes down, makes their way to Chesapeake City. Those improvements, before they get any type of permitting, they have to get approved by the state highway. The school district, I know, is also a concern. I believe the line is, is the line Frenchtown Road or is it Route 40? Does anyone know what's there?
Route 40.
Route 40. So the school district line is Route 40 for being in the Bohemian Manor School District. And that would be a concern of mine also, if I had any children anymore, if I was all burnt out of the house. But the Bohemian Manor School District, we have been in touch with Barry Willis, who, he doesn't make those decisions, but the way the school board works is, you know, there has to be a plan in place, and then even though it may say there's 1,000 single-family homes coming, that's going to take over the course of 10 years. They're not going to react until they get up to, I think it's 110% of capacity, is that? And I asked Charlie, because he's been in the school board system for many years.
Yes.
I know you don't want to say how many years.
Forty-two.
Oh, forty-two. Forty-two years.
You know, a thing or two.
And there's also, I think just recently, Mike Dixon did an interview on Cecil TV, and he talked about the history of the site. And it's, if there's any, as they're doing the, looking through the deeds, and they discover any type of Maryland Historic Trust easements on any of the property, they have to work with it. They can't, they have to apply by those rulings. So I understand that there's a cemetery back there, or there's going to stay a cemetery back there, they can't change those things. So I guess the, before I open up the floor for comments, I want to, I want to tell everyone, I'm in favor of this project, and I'm in favor of it because I've worked to try to get the best concept that I could for our community. And it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy. And no one likes it when it's a butt's up to their property or in their area and these issues that we're going to have. But you've got to, the process is, is going to be a process that our community can give input to, our community can make, make a difference, you can make a change. This is all concept at this point. There hasn't been any approvals. There hasn't been any approvals from state highway, from the school district, from the Town of Elton. There's, we're at the point now where they have to bring this concept, I believe, to the Planning Commission first. So they'll come in front of our Planning Commission, which could take several months of process before they get their final approvals. And there's a timeline involved, but realistically, I would say that the process probably will start September, probably November's first meeting for the Planning Commission. But anyone that wants that information, we're happy to give it to you, and we want your input. It's very, very important. And I, I like how everyone, social media's a fantastic thing today. It can be bad and it can be good, but it does make me aware of the thinking of our communities. And I do, I look at every comment, I truly do, and I saw the concerns about traffic in the school district. I also saw that we can't even make a decision whether you want a dog park or a, let's see, it was a dog park or some...
Playground.
A playground. So you see those things, and you see how difficult it is within your own, and so it's difficult even, you know, at our level. But we're trying to do the best for our town. We have to weigh, you know, the prosperity, but it has to be a purpose prosperity when we do these things. And it's very important for us to have that, and this is, this is going to happen whether we get involved or not. So I would recommend that everyone gets involved, and let's make it the best project that we can make, that hopefully 90% of us would be satisfied with. So that's kind of it. And so I'm going to open up the floor, but I need you to come up and sign in and state your name and address, and I'm happy to, if you want to raise your hand, I'll kind of point to you if you want to come, or maybe you don't even want to say anything. But we're happy. Mr. Giblin, come on down. There, he'll be our first one.
This is Shepard, this is Shepard from the general...
Okay, I'm going to give everyone five minutes. Everyone's got five minutes tonight.
Ed Giblin, 214 North Street. Mr. Mayor, did you say that this will create 1,000 jobs?
That's what I've been told, yes.
Over what time period?
Once again, it's a conceptual, and I would say it would be a 10-year window.
Okay. Now, the skill levels, will it be a mix of low skill levels, medium, and high skill
I know one of the, in a, in a, and I've signed off on confidentiality, but the, there's one part of the project that I know that the average paying job would be $45,000.
Okay, but, you know, do they also need housekeepers?
That's correct.
Everything like that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, Shirley.
First off, I want to thank the town for finally cleaning up the retention house on that. Can they do it now in Millaholland?
Mr. Dan Hanley, did you get that message?
So anyway, Shirley Anderson, 16 Ractup Court. You've been working for a long time to get business down into the downtown area. How is this going to help building the downtown area?
I don't think it'll, it certainly won't hurt the downtown. Will it help? I think that you're going to see, when you have, there's going to be a, this is going to be a population change to our communities. And it's a, it's a, when I say a population change, let's, let's add 1,000 new homes times an average of three or four people. You're looking at 3,000 to 4,000 additional people living into the Town of Elton, and when you take that, it's going to have to help our downtown area. It'll help all the town.
Now, is the Town of Elton going to give any concessions to these developers, like tax-free sewer hookups, because you eliminated the sewer hookups for any building on existing their plots? Are they going to benefit by that?
That's, that's a great question. The current Opportunity Zone, as it states right now, they're not asking for any relief. The hookups, the water and sewer hookups, that's going to be available, as it's been available, to anyone that wants to build a residential. The commercial side of it, they've got to still pay their hookup fees.
So where are these apartments going to be sitting? Are they going to be sitting on outside or on the underside of 213?
The, the concept that he showed us, which was on July 31st, the concept was to put the apartments on the corner of Frenchtown and 213.
Okay, because I thought you'd say that's where the single-family...
There's, there's, now that's, the single-family homes will be at the 39 acres on the east, east, I guess it would be the east line, this side of 213 and Frenchtown. And at the other side, going closer to the water, that whole area, you've got, you've got probably 70, 80 acres there. So there's a, there's a lot to do, a lot of commercial and the apartments.
Okay, so the apartments going to be on the power side?
Not, not as it was stated today. And, and once again, it's a working, it's a never-changing plan. So what I tell you today, until he actually gets in front of our Planning Commission, I couldn't tell you exactly where. There's no plan strong. It's all, it's all truly a concept. And I'll be happy to give everyone a copy of that map, or I can post it if you want me to post it.
Yeah, let us do it.
I'll be happy to post it.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
I heard Opportunity Zone financing through banks and that kind of thing, but it's not clear to me where all the money's coming from. Maybe you can explain that a little bit, but I don't see in Elton here where you're going to get the kind of... bit, but I don't see in Elton here where you're going to get the kind of money for opportunity zones that you're talking about, even though it's an interesting concept. And maybe it comes from out of Elton, but where, like these houses they're going to build as a contractor, going to finance them, where's the financing coming from?
Well, you're asking me questions. I, I, I know just a little bit about, and the, the, I can speak to the opportunity zone if you'd like. That would be great, but I'm going to let this, I'm going to pull you up here to talk about the opportunity zone. But the funding for the opportunity zone that's going through PNC, that money could be coming from anywhere across the United States into this one. So that fund is available to anyone to take advantage of, who's going to be doing business in the opportunity zone if the project's approved financially.
Well, is the opportunity zone, is that the principal source of funding, or is it, or the rather sources of funding?
I would think there'd be many sources of funding, but the, I know that the, the houses that they were looking at, and it is, it's, without telling you, I think it's the number-two builder in the, in the country that they're working with. And the house that I was stole, it's going to be between two eighty-five and three fifty, was the numbers that they were looking at. But I would think anyone's available to get their financing anywhere.
It's an interesting concept.
Yeah.
The, the next question, which is an unusual question, but you're interested in local purchasing. So these contractors are coming in, they have national contracts with lumber companies and other companies. Is there any opportunity to talk to these people about local purchasing? Local purchasing for-
I'm, I'm right with you on that. I, I think that when you see, and have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Jackson, I think that he's going to stress that, that anywhere that they can buy locally, they, we need them to buy locally. That's very important to our whole economy.
When the builders come in here, they can buy lumber for less than they can buy in Elton, but I'm thinking lumber. But anyway, the, maybe there can be something worked out where there's some adjustments made. So, okay, you're buying direct, bringing it in, but if you buy local, we can work something out. I'm suggesting that there's a, it's a different approach. That's never happened here in Elton before, as far as I know.
Well, my heart's with local businesses and I want them to buy local.
Okay. Anyway, I thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Couch, come on down and tell us a little bit about the opportunity zone.
Okay.
Because I probably got everyone confused.
You have the basis of it.
Bill Couch is our representative for the county council.
Just here in district two, so this is something close to your job. I've actually been working on council with the state provision for an opportunity zone. It's a federal program that was headed up by HUD, Housing and Urban Development, and Secretary Carson, and I've actually been to Washington and heard an address there as well. The program was rolled out to affect economically depressed areas, and it's, it's an effort to, to generate jobs and economic development in those areas where there has been little or slow development and job growth within those areas. When the program was first identified, they expected about hundreds billion dollars of investment in this. Since the program has actually been rolled out, they've identified that there are over six point six trillion dollars of unrealized capital gains in the United States. So what the basis of the program is, is you can take a profit from another investment vehicle, let's say it's a stock portfolio, let's say it's a, another commercial real estate project, and you have a million dollars of, of profit coming from that. You can pull that money and put it into a project that has a trust or fund in the opportunity zone. And if you leave that investment there for five years, you get a ten percent waiver of your capital gains tax. Seven years, you get fifteen percent. If you leave it in ten years or more, there is a one-hundred percent waive of your capital gains tax. So not only will you then save the capital gains on the investment that it came out of, but you'll actually be engaged in the same type of a situation with the investment that you do put it in. So this is going to be affected by large investment opportunities. PNC Bank has put aside four hundred and seventy-five million. The state of Maryland has put fifty-three point six million into the program. I think Governor Hogan was the first to engage the program at a state level. It's been a little bit slow rolling out because it was a very complex program and it had a lot of moving parts. And, but it actually has now been set in stone. It's not going to be extended. It's not going to change what you see is what you get. And there is a bit of a effort to make sure that these funds get created before the end of two thousand and nineteen, because you begin the clock ticking on the five-year and the seven-year. The ten-year, you can actually, we could really have until twenty twenty-six before that kind of expires, and that correlates with the seven-year waiver of fifteen percent. So this, these are the type of projects that this is actually exactly directed at. Cecil County, every, every state in the country had opportunity zones, every county in Cecil County, and Maryland had opportunity zones, and Cecil County got three. One, as Rob pointed out, is downtown Elton, east and west Main Street and up north Street to a certain degree, not, not this far up, but. The other, the second is Principio Industrial Park, which is also an enterprise zone, which that addresses more of the tax incentive, property tax incentives and income taxes that is there over a ten-year period. And then the third is this piece of property, almost specifically that piece of property. So I don't think this was by chance, and it took a lot of planning and a lot of effort, and it just had to get it in front of the right person, the right time, it had the right amount of capital, and I believe this, this capital's going to come out of state in a general rate.
And, and you know, I, I want to continue to stress, this is, there's going to be a, a lot of this, it's going to, we have an opportunity to ask for a lot right now, and they're not asking us for a lot, because, think about that. The money that they, they're, they're investing is going to have ten years, it's, it's-
It's going to have built-in incentives.
Built, there is built-in incentives.
So I, I think Rob, the mayor is touching on a, a very, very poignant point here. This is a project where you will have an ask. You can actually go to them and ask for, okay, you know, you're going to do this project in our town limits, you're getting the incentive of the tax, capital gains tax waivers. We would like to see this. And they're going to be far more amiable to, to doing those things because they've got that incentive built in. It's very much like the incentives in the enterprise zones and the opportunity zones in Principio. But we need to make sure that we hold these developers' feet to the fire and make sure that we get what's invested just in Elton. And I, you know, I have great confidence in, in the mayor and in the commissioners that they have done their due diligence. They have looked at what these opportunities are, pardon the pun, and that they will bring to the table what's best for the town of Elton and its residents. So I, I wanted to say congratulations from, from county council that this has been a long, hard work of labor, and I think you guys have got to the end of the beginning.
That's right. Thank you.
Me too, there. The other thing that Mr. Lemon had brought up was the second point that you-
Buy local.
Yes, thank you. So there is an effort within the county to make sure that buy local is a priority. Former commissioner and councilman, Robert Hodge, has a committee that works entirely on making sure that local community organizations get at least a fair, if not greater, opportunity on these projects. It's already been done at Great Wolf Lodge, and that's not even kind of out of the, the ground yet, but, so that will be definitely part of the efforts in this project as well. We'll make sure that that-
Mr. Lemon?
And where I'm coming from is, let's say you come into Elton, you're going to build a hundred houses.
Yes, sir.
You will have a national contract.
Yes, sir.
So the question is, can you talk, can, can there be a meeting to discuss the national contract and, and buy the same product locally, even though it's going to cost more money? Is there a way to adjust that somehow or another? I don't know the answer to that question, but I think it's open for discussion. It would be a big boon to local business.
It, it would.
If it could be worked out, because these guys come in, they already have their agreements as to where they're going to buy. So the only time they call locally is when, let's say something breaks, so they need to go downtown and pick it up or something like that.
What we found to be the best opportunity in this is, it's very difficult with materials, because they've negotiated, you know, materials in contracts which are enormous, and those are figured into the cost of the home. So if materials would change and they couldn't buy them at the same level, it would change and affect the, the, the cost of building the home, which would affect the sale price of the home. Where we've actually had success is making sure that our local subcontractors, you know, an electrician, a, a plumber, HVAC, you know, that we get the opportunity for those businesses here, who then will turn around and buy, because they've got contracts with local providers. So that's a way that we can kind of infuse some local flavor into these large national builders, because it's difficult to get inside of their requisition of materials, because they, they've negotiated these on such large, large formats.
Well, they've negotiated big deals, but if, if you could see it here, maybe, maybe we could negotiate a big deal here, some of these companies, based on what's coming up. I don't know. I'm just suggesting-
Thank you.
I'm just suggesting and hoping.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down, Ms. Eric.
I wasn't even involved in any of this or thinking through this, but the term buy local tends to mean buy mom and pop. But that doesn't mean that we don't have large supply companies within our Cecil County area. I work for a large, work for a national building company, building supply company. So there's a couple hundred people at my job that would greatly benefit from these developers coming in with their national contracts, and we do business with those large builders as well.
Fantastic.
So I know when you hear local or buy local, you think small, and I'm not trying to take anything away from the lumber companies in Elton, but you do have a national supplier. We're one of Forbes Fortune five hundred companies, so we do have that as well.
Thank you.
I was at National Night Out last night. It was fantastic. I know that's a little off-topic, because everyone's very into this. I'm excited about this. I think it's a great opportunity. But I wanted to thank the chief from the public and the people that were out there, not just from the town. It was fantastic. We had a great time.
Glad you did.
Always have a great time.
Glad you were there.
But I did notice something. The steps going up onto Main Street, a couple of months ago, I was in one of these meetings, and they had this great plan to paint the steps, and they were going to look fantastic. And I was all excited, because I was going to be right in the parking lot, I was going to get to see that for nothingness. What happened?
We had a recommendation not to paint them because of the chemicals that we put onto the concrete, and it just wouldn't have, we don't believe it would have been in our best interest.
Well, good.
I know.
Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Lemon, another comment?
Yeah, part of what I'm suggesting is that we get the buyers and sellers together. So you have a list of local companies and who to contact and that kind of thing. I don't think that's ever been done before either.
I think I can do that.
That's something I know you can do.
I can do it.
And so these guys come in here, and they know where to buy widgets and this and that and this and that. I think that's important.
Thank you. Yes?
The last meeting I was in, I threw out the ABC Communities, which is asset-based community development. That training is coming on the sixteenth, just two Fridays. Anyone who's interested, reach out to Barb, the county office, and she can get you signed up for it. That might help with Mr. Lemon's idea as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rod, come on down.
Okay. Rod Bird, Southern Hill Ward. I just thought it'd be a good time to bring this up. I've had, as you imagine, a lot of people talk to me with issues about this project, and there's three things that kind of have come up the most. One is concern about the school district impact. I know, you know, whatever information you can give us about that might be helpful. I don't know if the county can help us with that at all. Maybe, maybe if they increase the size of Bohemian, and maybe you have to with this kind of population increase, maybe they can increase the size of the school of Bohemian so they don't have to move the district lines very far. That's, that's the first concern that was raised, just you guys are sensitized to that. Second was, I haven't seen the map yet, but the, the property line boundary between us and this project is a creek. Okay, it's pretty deep. It's kind of almost a gorge, and there are, it's very heavily wooded. And so one of the concerns is, what is it that they're going to put right next to us? We're hoping that as much as possible, that buffer can remain, so if there's any way we can influence that.
But you can.
And so keep me in the loop on how we can do that. So that's the second thing. And the third thing was, we've had the feeling that our sewer system and our water supply have been stressed all along. How are they going to take this impact?
The, well, there's a, a couple of things as far as infrastructure. The town of Elton has had a, I don't know, I don't know whether to use the word partnership, but there's a well on the site that the town has been having permitting for, which will produce seven hundred thousand gallons.
Five hundred daily, seven twenty, seven hundred twenty thousand month of maximum use. Is it true they're going to have to put a water tower in that building?
There's possible, very possible that there would have to be a water tower. The, so the, the water side of things, and then the wastewater side, we're currently at, we're at, our capacity of our plant is two point-
Three point, three point two million gallons a day, and we're probably pushing about two million. So there's room? You said there's plenty of capacity?
There's plenty of capacity, but if all these things start happening at once, we will absolutely have to put another ring on our wastewater treatment plant, which would provide us close to another million gallons.
I even clarify, it would give us five million gallons a day.
An additional five hundred. Now, also during, during these talks with some of the prospective new users of water, it was brought to my attention that Artigian Water has ten million gallons available per day that could supply the town of Elton. So not that we want to go down that road, we may have to go down that road in the interim until our infrastructure's in place, but there's plenty of water available.
I mean, it's also cost, price effective is also a factor.
That's correct.
If there's going to be a cost impact of the hits to the water and so-
It does, but if you don't have to build a water tower and other things, it may work out better the other way, too.
Okay. All right. That was it.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, sir. And I should know your name, but I don't know your name.
No, that's all right. Ken Rippon, eight Ashland Court. So I'm going to come at this from a little bit different than everyone's concern. I want to go back to your vision.
Yep.
Okay. I wanted to understand what you meant. First, I want to say, let me back up. I want to thank you all for the job that you're doing, and I appreciate it very much. Because I came down with a base realignment offer, and we chose Elton because of what it offered, and I just thank you for running the town.
Thank you.
To that, the other reason I wanted to come is like, I wanted to figure out how to help.
Thank you.
All right. So I saw this, I'm glad you said it was in the conceptual phase, and I was just curious of how much influence did you have on the concept itself, or is that locked in load into the state John's pipe?
There's a, I, I actually met with Mr. Jackson today, and that's why I'm saying it's a moving target.
Okay.
And he would, well, he even got a copy of it, so-
Yeah, I did my homework.
I would say to you that nothing is, is in stone.
Okay.
By any means.
So when you say sports complex, right, fields, what does that mean? What's that, what's that image you have?
When, and I've actually got drawings for this that we have put together over the last four and a half years, but the sports complex was, throughout the six hundred and fifty acres, it would be a concept of where you look in the purple where the industrial side- would be a concept of where you look in the purple where the industrial side was. That was going to be an area where it would all be related to indoor activity. There would have been, been over a million square foot of indoor recreation, which would be inclusive of a theatrical arts building, there would be a concept of the aquatics.
Right.
There would be the basketball, field hockey, volleyball, it would be a campus.
Okay, so who do you think the users are coming in? I mean, the reason I say that is when I looked at, when I looked at this image, right, it spoke to me in a different way. I didn't know anything about your project, right? Didn't know anything. And when I looked at this and I read the definitions, I took the purple, it was all commercial, I understood that very well, right? And then I started looking over here, and I was like, wow, all right. So I got a marina, and then I was thinking that this brown part was going to be high-end luxury condos that's going to feed off that marina, and then there must be a restaurant in there, because that's what's really cool about having a restaurant bar marina, because that's what I figured, you know, the upper Chesapeake is really about when I came to Maryland. It's like everything is about the restaurant bar marina. And then when I saw this, this, this other green area, I was like, well, that's pretty big. Like, when is Elton getting a minor league baseball team? I'm serious, because that's what I thought that was for. All right? And that, that would feed into bowling, various concerts, you've got baseball, you've got other kinds of events, where if you got a lot of people coming into town, fill up that hotel, and hopefully would spill into the downtown area for logic. You know, things like that. So that's where I was asking, how concrete is this concept?
The, I, I can tell you that it's not as concrete as you can look at that image as, but I will also say that we, during the last four and a half years, there was discussions with not only minor league baseball, but minor league lacrosse.
Right.
Minor league soccer.
Right.
And also, I can come right out and say it, the Philadelphia 76ers D-Squad, which they just put the facility in in Wilmington. We had a lot of opportunities to do a lot of that, but we wanted to really focus on the amateur sports market. And the reason why, even with minor league baseball, when you start using joint parking lots.
Right.
Major league baseball only gives their schedule six months in advance.
Okay.
So it was difficult to plan those concerts out until you had the major league schedule, and that was with the minor league sports. That was our biggest challenge, looking at minor, mixing it with amateur sports.
Okay, okay.
And that's one of the challenges that Griffon Stadium has in Aberdeen, is my understanding that they have, from, from, they start their season, I think, mid-June.
Right.
And they run, and then they're okay from when they're not playing.
Yeah.
But during that session, when they're playing, they can't, they can't do anything.
Yeah, that's interesting, because we came from, tripping on New York. Okay. We moved to Jersey, and so we're in Jersey, and we were by the minor league baseball club.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yeah, they did have concerts. They had a bunch of concerts, even had Bob Dylan show up.
But I would say if you've got one, we'll get you down here to talk to me.
Well, I don't have one, but you got seven, I'm going to hit the believe button and say you do have that $700 million, okay? And I'm not worried about financing, right? I'm saying how you spend that $700 million, and making sure that the wheels of the train stay on track, and try and get tortoise dollars in. And so I'm not, I'm not an expert in this domain, right? So I'm just trying to figure out, is that what's going to get butts in the seat? Is that type of recreational facilities?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I thought that's what you guys were going to bring it on, influence to say, what's the biggest bag for the buck? You know, like, what problem am I solving? And things like that. And, you know, figure out, how's it done today? What are the limitations on how it's done today? What is new to be approached that these guys should pitch it?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And what gives evidence that it's going to work? All right. Now, I'm reading from my cheat sheet, because, I'm going to leave this with you, because it's really cool.
I would appreciate that.
So the thing is, what I'm reading from is the director of DARPA, all right, Defense Advanced Research Project Agency. So Dr. George Heimer made these lists of questions, because he believed that big reward requires big risk taking. Okay? That's how it works. You want big reward, that's why you're going to have to take a risk. That's just the way it works. And so how do you know what risks or, you know, what's worth taking? So he wrote it out. And these are the questions that you would ask someone that's pitching a project, or a research project, or anything, to make sure that you're going to, yep, ask these questions. And it's like, ah, that's, that's where they'd ask. And I think these questions help just get the, your, you know, your thinking.
It does.
Yeah. Because then it's like, you know, questions like, how long is it going to, this is parameter of something, you know, how long is it going to take, how much will it cost? And then it's like, what are your midterm and final standards look like? Now, if that's not it, then it's what's your exit? Entrance criteria and exit criteria in various phases of the Bible. Okay? And then what are the metrics? And I got, right. So that's why I was interested in how to help.
Well, listen, I want you to help.
Yeah?
I sincerely, sincerely mean that, and as we go through this process, I will post exactly when our meetings are, and if anyone wants a one-on-one with the, the new owner of the project, I promise you, he'll be happy to meet you right here, sit down with him, go over the whole project, what he sees.
Right.
And I have, I, I think I've exhausted everything that I truly know about the project at this point, but we're going to learn as we go.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Thank you so much.
I'm not going to give you a copy. I want you to be self-conscious.
We have more, of course, please. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say about the project? Comments?
Can I ask you one more question?
Yeah, go ahead, Trish.
They can source down Big Yuck Mall. Is there any interest or activity, if Ollies was having interest there at the old Kmart? The last I heard?
Yeah, actually, I met with David Cordish about four weeks ago. I was in his office at the power plant line, and I asked him specifically, how come the Ollies hasn't made it here yet? Kmart still has a lease. Kmart still has a lease, but he said that the Ollies is going to take one-third of the building, of the Kmart, two-thirds. He has landed the social security office, which is going, they're doing an addition to it now. He told me he's going to tear down Comcast building, and he is listing for us for Texas Roadhouse. So I've been begging for that steakhouse, as everyone else has, for all these years, and he said he would do the best that he could. Now, he did offer to me, if it was up to his son to put, they own the franchise PBR. Does anyone know, not patch blue ribbon, but it's professional bull riding. So anytime you go to any of his events, you know, he owns Xfinity Live. Has anyone been to the Philadelphia Eagles facility, or the, the Philadelphia Phillies? There's a place there called Xfinity Live. They have a, it's a, it's a massive sports entertainment facility, which has maybe six or seven bars, but professional bull riders is a country music, line dancing venue, and he felt, he actually had interest in putting it in the second part of Kmart. But he's got a twist in his son's arm, and once again, you know, I'll say it, and it's the first time I said it, he said it to me that he would try, but that doesn't mean it's going to happen. So what I do know is the Ollies is coming. Yes, sir.
One thing that's interesting about that is Xfinity is Verizon, and, you know, if you don't like throw up gas, a lot of us would have a choice, that would have, that may, if he came in there, maybe that would bring up the better internet.
It's very possible. And your name, sir?
My, my name is Carl Dorman. Actually, I have a few things to say.
Yeah, come on down.
My name is, my name is Carl Dorman.
Yes, Carl.
I'm a, I'm a name.
Have a seat there.
Okay.
We'll get you to fill your name out there.
I'll do that.
And I won't forget your name next time.
Okay. My name is Carl Dorman. I've lived in Elton for 10 years now. I'm a landlord of, like, apartments, and I live on Backwall Street right now. I try to bounce around, I got a few things, and I was hoping I walked a little slower, I could get another minute or something.
I hear you.
Okay. How's, it was interesting, you mentioned about the, your 650 acres and stuff. Doesn't it seem like they might have to be in different areas and be spread out so that people can get to them? Because like, a lot of people are renters to Elton. And I was curious about what happened with the skate, the skate park that we had? I mean, that was something that was kind of on, it was on, I mean, I almost spent too much time with skate park, because I have a couple other things, but I was curious if you know.
Well, the, the skate park that was right off of Howard Street and Hill Avenue, there was some damage done to the.
Some water.
And, and we just went ahead and removed them.
Okay. The, the main reason I came is I got a letter, and I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to read this. I appreciate everybody's time, and especially my peers, too. I, I got a paper to talk about speed pumps, and I just wanted to talk about that for a minute. I'm not sure if you got a chance to read my paper, but.
I, I'm sure I didn't.
If you get a chance, but anyway, I, I think just a couple things. The, the speed pumps, they, they increase the response time of emergency vehicles, or fire trucks, ambulances, and the police agencies, and, which makes Elton actually a little bit less safer to, to reside. There's a lot more wear and tear on the vehicles, you know. I, I know we allocated money for the, the bumps themselves, but, you know, there's actually the wear and tear on the town vehicles, such as suspension, abuse on the wheel alignments, and no brake payments, and the extra fuel from the humps. Patients and ambulances complain about the, the humps sometimes cause more pain. You know, we're actually fortunate that we have a hospital here. The Cameron School Business has determined the areas with speed bumps will actually decrease in value. You know, as a property owner, who actually lives here, too, you know, certainly don't want or afford that to happen. And probably nearly, you were right about the residents, nearly half of the citizens who reside on Backwall, or on High Street anyway, are renters. That would probably help them out. They might start, I mean, so that might drive the owners to more buy houses elsewhere, because the rent goes down, you know? The value goes down, the, the rent's going to go down, too. They might go to northeastern Delaware. The, the speed humps are, they're, they're pretty costly, and they're, they're even more costly to, to remove. Mexico City actually decided to remove over 30,000 speed bumps in order to improve traffic flow and air quality. You know, but those funds could have been probably used more wisely. We've actually done a lot, Elton, I mean, not, I guess it's you guys, I mean, but I consider myself weeds, and I live here, but Elton has, has made some very positive strides, I think, to, to help save money and do things in the right way, by like, making things safer, eliminating the boked vehicles a few years ago, that we had packs of them running around, and that was, you know, they were unregistered, and had the bicycles that have lights or vectors, you know, that's a lot safer, and it's, it's smart. I think it was a great idea to, to construct the traffic circle out there. I mean, that could have very little bit of light, and then we're paying for it, you know? One thing I noticed is that Toroma blew a traffic guard instead of like, having a bump there. They, I don't know, the van's only 15 bucks an hour, in busy times, I mean, that would be a lot cheaper than a, a speed bump. And, you know, it works, I mean, even when people are walking, people slow down. Some, some other things that, that could be considered, too, are solar traffic signs. I mean, just, I mean, we already have a solar, we have a couple solar fields, I think we have one up like it from Mattern and over there. I mean, they work when, I, I know I hit the brake when, when I see it, and they're, they're proving to be effective, and they're only about 1,600 bucks instead of the bumps, which are over 1,000 yourself. I mean, I, I thought, you know, possibly we could maybe even hire traffic cars, I'm not sure if that's the case, but we could, we could, there's a possibility we could hire more officers and start a more modernized street patrol. I, I found out last night that we actually do have a bicycle patrol. I didn't realize it, but there's only four officers out of everybody who are certified. Yes? It's not very bad. You know, and I can't blame them. I wouldn't want to be riding around on a bicycle all day for eight to nine hours, that's a lot of time. And, and something that, that maybe we could do is, since things are changing, is, is maybe have some electric bikes, or hybrid bike bikes. We got these solar fields, maybe we could use them, and some of these bikes even pulled up, they could, they could pop them in the car, ride over a hybrid van, or, you know, drive to the place, and then ride around for a little bit. I mean, when they're, when they're, when they're going around together, they're, they're getting stuff done, there's a difference to me in the car, it's more personal, I mean, they, they really do a good job anyway. I mean, it's amazing, got the chance to work with some of them. But, you know, something I noticed the other day, I was down in the city of Longwood, VA, and they had electric scooters all over the city. I don't know if you've seen this. I didn't know it, but they, obviously, they're just everywhere, and you have a, you have an app. I mean, they're just, you just throw them down everywhere. And I was following them, actually, on my motorcycle while I did, I thought it was just a group of people or something, but it wasn't. You can like, dial it up and get so many minutes on, on the thing, and you can just take off on a scooter, ride down, a little mini, bitty scooter, ride down, and when you're done, you just leave it go, and pick them up and charge them. I don't know, I mean, the officers having electric bikes, I was like, is unreasonable, you know? To be able to throw them down in the back of a bike would be really good. It would, you know, if they did, just going out now, they're going to burn a lot, you know, they're carrying a whole bunch of weight, man, in a car, and chasing people with hoops and, and stuff. They, you know, if they had something like that, that would really save, and then, you know, it might encourage more officers to actually go ahead and, that, I mean, because they're, they're all in pretty good shape. We are fortunate to have a good police force, we really are. Let me see if I have, bear with me here, kind of, kind of speed through.
Do you please send a request out to Mackle for a rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And something else you mentioned, you talked about the drawings that you, you had, you had some drawings. We make them available to the public so we can see them. I'd love to, I mean, I don't know where we would set them or, or something, but I think that would be great.
I think what we'll do is, Lou, if we can get the actual concept, we'll put it right, right in the middle, when you come in and pay your order in sewer bills. We'll put that concept up for a period of time so everyone can see it, but I will post it.
Okay, that's great.
Katie will post.
I believe that's, that's it. I'm a little under my time, this is it. I, I would like to give you a call if these schools are coming, if you can understand. I just have a couple things I think that, that might help the LA, I think.
Thank you.
Help the officers as well, make it all can see through, helps everything.
Carl, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The project that you described is actually drawn to a draw, and will completely change Elton.
Or, or we, we all have to see part of it, probably.
One thing I maybe owe about that, too, is that, you know, since a lot of people are, are renters, and it's either good, bad, or indifferent, can it be just in one place? Because how are people going to get to it? If they're renters, a lot of times, like, I have a point, because a lot of their buildings have vehicles. And there are, there are public places that are around here, which is good, we can get around, but they, I mean, we have the YMCA, that, that's good. There's a couple places, but I don't, I don't know if it would work if we had just one spot. Sounds great. I mean, I love it, and I like the idea for the kids, for the kids stadium, I mean, from here, but I don't know if you have, if you've ever been there.
I have.
Have you seen the kids stadium? It's pretty, I mean, it's pretty awesome, I mean, if you could take that from the tissue they play there, there, and there, that would be a great thing.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody has anything they could add to. I don't know if anybody has anything they could add to, if it got said, but if you do, just feel free to say something. How could I, uh, reach you, make sure you...
I want you to get everything to Michelle.
Is that the letter that you sent us?
I did send a copy, well, I gave it to the office and I gave it a copy.
Yes.
I don't think you want to see my scratch.
Okay, thank you. We, uh, I'm sure, we should give it to us. Thank you. Yes ma'am, come on down.
Tracy Thomas, I'm at five with five island.
Yes.
You mentioned that, uh, that the school board...
I think you took, I think you took the sign and you...
You mentioned the school board doing a delivery to a hundred and ten, ten percent capacity. How close you go now to that currently and to make your projected expenses for the next few years?
I, I can find out for you. Uh, Harry Willis is, uh, very open. He's with the school board and he's our contact and we're in contact with him, but I haven't asked that direct question. But I will ask that direct question and I'll post it for everybody.
Okay, hopefully we have some money for growth too.
Well, I'm hoping so too. You know, I'm a, I'm a Bohemian Manor graduate.
Is Florida open for public comment now?
It will be. Charlie, can you take it, I got it. Anyway, you're, you're in charge, Charlie.
Any more questions coming from the audience that anyone to provide us with? Get answers. Are there any questions relating to anything like Mr. Giblin said beyond what we're talking about now? Before we close out? Yes, sir. Public comment, that is.
Public comment.
Right.
My name is Bill Witt. I am the owner of First Choice Foundations. And we are a concrete contractor located on two forty-nine South Bridge Street. And I have to tell you, I'm excited about the project coming south side. Because I know there's going to be a lot of concrete that has to be poured. Under no illusions that I'm going to be pouring at all, but like other contractors here in the towns, I know that we will receive benefit from that volume of work. And I've heard, heard a lot of truisms here about this project. And it has to do with local labor. Because local labor will benefit from that project. Even if the plumbing contracts go out, fits in Baltimore or Philadelphia, these outfits still hire local labor to work. So it will be good for me. The other truism I heard this evening was on Friday afternoons, South Bridge Street is a parking lot, just like the rest of two thirty. So I am sure that during the course of the project, these issues will be addressed. I did want to come here tonight to speak on a very specific subject. But I do want to qualify myself before I start on this subject. I am a cat owner. And this was our shop cat that we had at South Bridge Street. Very fond member of the team. Contracted a feline cancer and passed away last year. But I have adopted other cats from the area and have taken them home. Until my wife told me, please don't bring home any more cats. And I said, okay.
Oh, bring home.
Three.
Okay.
Please. Recently, we've had a situation where there is a volume of cats in our part of town. We are located right next to Big Elk Mall. We back up to the Big Elk Creek. They country associates or the landscapers on the other side. It is so bad with the volume of cats down there. I wrote a letter to the mayor and commissioner, I received it last month. I also wrote to the health department and I also wrote to animal control services. And I have to say that the response from the health department and animal control services has been unsatisfactory. In my initial letter that I wrote to the town, I indicated that there were fifteen or so cat boxes on my property line with the Big Elk Mall. I was incorrect. There are fifty-three cat boxes and I have photo evidence here. Fifty-three cat shelters. So that should indicate the number of cats in that area that we are dealing with. On Monday mornings, when we come to work and we're loading our trucks to go out for the dead, there's cat feces all over our yard. And the cats have gotten into our buildings and they sprayed. And it's, it's just a mess. And I am requesting that the town take action. And I know that this is a very emotional issue for some people. And I understand that. But it is beyond just a few cats. And I don't think the town would want to have fifty-three cat boxes on the businesses on Main Street. And I certainly don't want that volume near our business.
Can you give me some suggestions?
There are many towns and cities across the country that make it illegal to feed and shelter stray animals. Now, I know this goes against all of the philosophy that you're going to hear from animal control because they're going to say, well, you want to keep them all together so that we can spray and neuter them. While they've been trying to spray and neuter these cats for years. And part of the problem is, members of the community know what goes on down there and if they have an animal that they no longer want, they don't drive them down to animal control. They drop them off at the Big Elk Mall. And they've dropped off pregnant cats down there. And that's just made the situation worse.
I, I will say to you that we're very aware of it. And, uh, it's, it's been, uh, I think you could research that. Five years ago, I went after this.
I, I remember, sir, and I know that there was a...
I was about ready to be drove through the town, through the cat litter.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I, I personally was attacked by, uh, all the way from California by the Barbie Twins. Uh, I was on their national radio show about this mayor in Elton wanting to do away with, with the cats. But I will say, I think that we, and shame on us, shame on me, because I allowed it to get as bad as it's gotten right now. And I will say to you that we will take some, uh, action. And we're going to take some action that I think all sides could be happy with. And, uh, I, I will take the responsibility for that. So we're going to move forward and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes.
Especially on Monday.
We, we, we had some initial conversations about this. Uh, we, I don't know if we reached out to Dr. Carletti, but I think that was one of the discussions we talked about to start the process of getting down there and spraying, spraying the, uh... At one time, it was a no charge by the county. And now it's, uh, it costs the town of Elton, I think fifty or seventy dollars or eighty dollars per cat that we have. And, uh, the, the rule is if you feed the cat, you own the cat. It's, it's our understanding. But I promise you, we'll get some results in a positive way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Just to confirm, is that exactly right? I mean, I've taken it for you myself that I've relocated several to wilderness type areas. I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I do know that identifying the problem is the first part of the process, that's true.
It's a problem and, and I, I wanted to take them up to Lou's house, his farm in Pennsylvania, but he won't take them.
I got four cats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Lemon, one more comment?
Yeah.
I'll get you Mr. Giblin. I'll give you one back up.
I know everybody wants to get on this offer, this is the Big Elk Mall.
No, it's actually ours, it's on our property now. The town of Elton property where those cats are.
This is about homeless.
Yes.
And I said before, I thought the town did a very good job of addressing the problem. I have two questions. One is, at the last meeting, this gentleman was here about vacant rental property next to him where the homeless and other people were living and he was very upset. Is that problem addressed?
It has.
Okay. The other thing is, I went to the eight o'clock service at Trinity Episcopal on Sunday and there was a guy homeless sleeping in the doors of the sacristy. And then we go over to the parish house and there's a beer bottle on a ledge. So the problem still addresses, uh, still exists down in that area. So while I think you've done a good job, there's things to be worked to be done.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Giblin, you're, let me, let me add this fellow, he hasn't had a word yet. Come on down.
How are you?
Doing great.
Uh, Bo Coman, two eleven Mahaland Drive. My topic of interest, just to bring up to the mayor and your board, is, um, your dependency on information technology and the systems that support the cat development. My, my background, some people can attest to that, is in cybersecurity. And as you probably are aware, uh, everyone's under attack.
I agree.
And my interest is what the town has done to prepare. Proactive needs to be done now because reactive is going to cost you everything. So the state of Maryland, Baltimore has already experienced it and several other places right now are experiencing it. And I just wanted to bring it up and inquire about what is being done, if anything, and how you're going to deal with it when it happens.
Well, well, to answer your direct question, I don't know specifically how we're reacting to it.
We, we have IT first and...
But I, I was going to, I was going to say Mike, Mike Devine is our AT.
Yeah, worked for both finance, us, administration and police in order to address cyber attacks.
But I think specifically to your question, uh, there may be, hopefully Mike is in, in the understanding of, of these new attacks is happening, which I'm sure he is. But we can get you that detailed information.
I'm just...
Do you do that type of work?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes.
It would be fantastic if you could reach out to us and, and drop off your information to us and, and, uh, you could give us an informal report if we're, if we're looking at the right things. We rely on our town residents to help us. Your town.
That is, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one thing, I know this building behind West End Gardens, there's a lot of trees there. I believe it was last year or the year before, they cut a lot of trees down. And that, that's like a bad spot for crime and a list of activity. Getting rid of those trees actually I think made a big difference. I think we actually made a big difference on the other side. Cleaned up a lot of trash, got a boat ramp, that was really good. Made a, a, a big, that, that was just a big improvement. Is, is there a plan, maybe a couple more trees out over there that could help that?
I think what we've done, and I'll look at our public works director, we went back here with the, uh, to, to, we couldn't cut the trees down, but we trimmed up.
Yeah, we trimmed up those two different...
Dan and I just met Friday on a couple of issues and we're going to clear it, but no. That's on our list. Dan's going to cut some things up and...
And listen, it's, it's very important, we got a lot of new faces in here tonight as, as you can see. And we don't get a lot of attention all the time and I really strongly appreciate everyone coming in. But we do have a department heads that any of yous can reach out to. But Michelle is our person that you can send all your inquiries to and she can field it to the chief, to the public works director, to our planning director. And, and we rely on your help, we really do. We truly want your help. And, and the folks in the communities that ask for our help, we truly help. Mr. Giblin, I know you got one more thing tonight. Now, you only got a couple of minutes, so I'm going to keep... All right, go ahead, sir. Mr. Giblin lives across the street and he's a regular at our meeting.
This morning, I got busy thinking about some new ideas. And I'm going to talk about them a little bit. And I'd like to get a, a handout and discuss them at the next town meeting. And I don't get feedback on pros and cons. You know, is it a good idea? Is it a dumb idea? You know, you can have ninety-nine dumb ideas and you have one good one. Now, it's all worth it. And here, here are some of them. One is to build a mini park along the Big Elk on, on Howard Street. I am one hundred, two hundred, three hundred yards down from the bridge. So people can sit and enjoy the peace and quiet and the creek flowing by. Also, there's a lot of people that walk from this area, you know, to your Dollar Tree, to the Yakima. And there's no place to sit in between. So, you know, it'd be nice to have a nice little mini park. We could ask for designs from Cecil College. Okay, next thing, I got it from Bel Air in Horford County, an annual BBQ bash. And I don't, didn't get any details, I just got it off the calendar. But they, they have it in the summer. And that sounds great, a barbecue bash and a lot of different things. Next thing I thought about is a quarterly newsletter to inform the citizens of Elton about what's going on. And I'm bringing like these little metal stands and have a stack a quarter, summer pool, winter spring. And like yesterday at the police carnival, I've been here, living here four years, I had no idea about it. I stumbled across it and it was a fantastic, fantastic job.
Thank you.
And, but, you know, it did a lot more attendance if there's wide worldwide circulation. And the next thing I thought about is a fire company carnival, these are the Carroll County. I lived ten years in Carroll County, the late eighties and throughout the nineties. And at that time, there were about four or five towns that had carnivals at different weeks throughout the summer. My three sons loved it. I had to go to at least three or four of them, you know, time after time again, you know. And, and I do have some other information about that. Now, there are eleven, Carroll County has eleven, uh, fire company carnivals throughout the summer. That's incredible. And I have a list here. I got it off the internet, I'll, I'll give you. And, uh, let me give what I have.
That's a great idea, to bring in money.
And it describes some of the things I know. And it describes some of the things I know. They have the. Like I said, I'm a guy who brings this up the next year. You know, some of them are, you know, be the.
Thank you. Actually, I think all of your ideas are very valid. We just recently had a, I'd say two weeks ago, met with Singerly Fire Company and brought the fire, brought up the carnival again. It's been brought up to the Elton Alliance. And the chief will even mention to you, I asked the FOP if they wanted to host a carnival in the town of Elton. I'm not saying that they fall on deaf ears, but the volunteers that are needed to operate these are very difficult. The barbecue, we need someone to take the lead on that. I think it would be a wonderful thing for you to take the lead.
My buddy, Mr. Bassin.
That's why I'm getting drunk. There you go. But we will give you a response at the next meeting.
And the last one, a quiet sky, a railroad trip to nowhere. Now, you can't give this anywhere here, it's not over by Metro now. But somewhere in the county, is there a railroad that just goes around? I don't know.
Okay, that's number one.
Number two, Mr. Bassin Miano.
You're hitting right around.
What exciting things are going on in the county, at the town?
What was your question?
What exciting things are going on in the town?
In the town, right now? What broke ground on the community center?
We discussed this yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, you sure did.
I'm a little confused. You know, I want to stress though, the opportunity is for public comment. And then we'll take the information and bring it back to you at the next meeting. I don't want you to put him on the spot and.
No, we talked about this yesterday.
We didn't. I had answers for him. All right. Very good.
All right. The last thing.
Yes.
Is a proclamation. In appreciation of Mayor Robert Alt, on this day, August 7th, 2019, the citizens of Elton, Maryland, declare and acknowledge all of the excellent service and leadership provided by Mayor Robert Alt. His leadership has proven the capacity to translate vision into reality. His story is one of challenges, changes, chances, and progress. He is steering Elton's course with a bold vision to foster change for the future of the town. Mayor Alt is making Elton a better place for generations to come. Just a few of his outstanding qualities include boundless energy, and he is tireless. Treats, he is everywhere, attends and supports all events, treats people with kindness, makes smart choices and delivers results. His goal is continuous improvement in all aspects of the town. Spearheads very complicated budgets each year and is a good steward of taxpayer dollars. The citizens of Elton hereby proclaim our appreciation for all of the excellent work, inspiration, and leadership provided by Mayor Alt.
Glad for that. Giblin, you read that exactly how it is. Thank you so much. You need a couple more minutes? Mr. Giblin, thank you so much. I believe, chief?
Yeah, is there any more public comment? I want to do, I want to keep this here till nine, so I want to do something. I don't want to put off until the next meeting.
Very good.
By doing this now, I can facilitate us participating in a grant instead of waiting two more days.
Okay.
Anyway, I just want to announce that we'll be partnering with the Cecil County Sheriff's Department on what's called the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. We call it JAG Grant. If you recall, mayor, you asked us to take some things out of our budget back in the spring times. Some of the things I took out were e-ticket riders. By participating in this grant with the sheriff's department, we'll be able to recoup two of those that cost about $3,000. So unless the board objects to us participating in this grant program, which we've participated in regularly over the past 20 years, I'm going to move forward with it.
Thank you. John, did we need to close meeting or not? Sarah?
I just want to throw one thing out there.
You want to say how nice this proclamation was?
Yeah, that was definitely on my mind. Hollingsworth Manor has the Family Education Center run by MRDC, Maryland Rural Development. They're having a back to school jam on Friday at 6 o'clock. And we got some of our cops coming to play kickball with our kids. Anybody that wants to come down and hang out with us. There'll be food and entertainment. It'll be a great day and we're going to kick the ball with cops. That's not what I meant. We're going to kick balls with the cops.
Thank you.
That would be great.
And listen, I really appreciate the new faces here tonight. It really means a lot to us. And I promise you, we'll keep you in the loop. We're very transparent here up on this board to make sure that everyone gets the right information. And I can tell you, we have, Katie is here and she reports on everything that's going on. And we also have video, which you could go on elton.org and watch the video of all of our meetings that we have here. But I will keep everyone in the loop on this process because it is our opportunity to have major input. And think about your neighborhoods, where they are now. As Councilman, Council said, we're kind of a hatbird seat here that we can ask. So maybe there's things in your communities that we can help with. With that, this meeting is adjourned.